All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Chief Rannick could lead us in the pledge, please.
For some reason, that sounded way cooler tonight. I just want to point that out. Can I get a roll call, please?
Lambert, Begonia, Jones, Lewis, Yanez.
Here, we have a quorum. Move on to item four, consideration of the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Councilmember Begonia?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's move on to item five, presentations. I think what a lot of people are here for tonight, so let's do this. All right, hey, everybody. All right. If I could get our Super Bowl champion Pee Wee football team to come on up, please. You guys just want to stand back here? And coaches, I know you're in control, so I'll let you line them up however you want. All right. And to make sure you guys all know you're on TV, look at that red light up there, just so you know. No, no pressure, no pressure. All right, coaches and players, to the Las Manas Wildcats Pee Wee football team in recognition of your outstanding sportsmanship and for winning the 2023 Super Bowl against Oakdale Stampede, the first team to win the Super Bowl title in Wildcat history. So I want to, I want to present this, this certificate of, of recognition to you, whoever wants it. All right, and I'm sure we'll need to take some photos. Any coaches want to say a few words?
They always defer to me. Listen, I just want to thank the city, the city councilman for acknowledging us, but more than that, I want to thank the, the young men that we have the privilege of coaching. They made this happen. Commitment, dedication to the idea of team, because here with the Wildcats, we don't cut, so everyone gets to participate. But the goal is always about the winning, and it's how you win. You win together, and these kids have proven that. From the top to the bottom, they've proven that. The coaching staff, the dedication it takes, because we volunteer. Our only reward is this, is our influence on these young men. You know, I, I started, I think, in 2009 coaching, and now these kids that I've coached are parents of their own children, and it shows that what we say and how we've done it has had an influence in their lives, and that's the greatest reward. So I just want to thank all the parents, all the parents, because without you, we know they don't drive.
All right, so stick, stick around, stick around, players and coaches, please don't go anywhere. The team also needs support, and they also need to be cheered on. So I would also like to acknowledge, if they're here, the Las Manas Wildcats Pee Wee cheer team, if you would come on up. All right. In recognition of your outstanding support of the Pee Wee Wildcat football team on their way to winning the 2023 Super Bowl against the Oakdale Stampede, we salute the Las Manas Wildcats Pee Wee cheer team. You want to say a few words? No? All right, let's give them another round of applause. I think there's more phones out than the Grammys right now. I like it. Uh, sure, I'll stay, I'm standing. I didn't, I didn't play this season, but I can stand up here. What's up, buddy? How are you? Over there? Let me get behind you. All right, congratulations again. All right. If I could have Mario Inigaz, Mario here? No Mario? Okay. Not, not sure of Mario's football-playing abilities, but we're going to give him an award anyway. Tonight, Mario Inigaz, Maintenance Mechanic One for Public Works Department, in recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the City of Las Manas for being named Employee of the Month for January 2024. So, thank you, Mario. Aaron Flores. Aaron here? No, no Aaron. Aaron Flores, Maintenance Mechanic One, Public Works Department, in recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the City of Las Manas and for being named Employee of the Month for January 2024. Congratulations, Aaron. And is Kim here? Kim's not here, all right. So I have a proclamation recognizing the retirement of City of Las Manas Finance Manager Kimberly, Kimberly Tomas, whereas Kimberly Tomas was hired as an Accountant One with the Finance Department on October 1st, 2007, whereas Kimberly Tomas moved up among, amongst the ranks and was appointed Deputy City Treasurer on October 22nd, 2009, and again on December 10th, 2010, before being promoted to Accountant Two on July 1st, 2014, whereas Kimberly Tomas was appointed City Treasurer on March 1st, 2017, and then elected to the same position on December 5th, 2018, where she served until December 2022, whereas Kimberly Tomas was promoted to Accounting and Budget Supervisor on July 1st, 2017, then to Finance Manager on November 16th, 2022. She has contributed tremendously throughout her career to the community of Las Manas through her knowledge and commitment to her job, whereas Kimberly Tomas retired from the City of Las Manas as Finance Manager with the Finance Department on January 20th, 2024, with more than 16 years of service as a full-time city employee. Now, therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the City of Las Manas do hereby commend Kimberly Tomas on her dedication and loyalty to the City of Las Manas and congratulate her on her retirement. We'll give people a few moments to switch seats if they want to. If they're not sticking around for the rest, that's okay. All right, we'll move on to item five. I'm sorry, item six, the public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the city council chamber's information table on the back. At this time, I'd like to invite the public to come forward and speak, and just remind to either silence or turn off your cellphones. Yes?
I'm TJ Lowbig. I help run the Little League in town, and I'm involved in the organization for football, and we're very grateful for, for having everybody here tonight and what's coming up with Parks in Town. I've been a big fan of upgrading and helping and doing what we can to make things better, but it really makes a big difference, not only for our Little League, which is coming up real quick with all the rain, and we're dealing with the flood over there and pumping water out and doing everything, but, but the upgrades that we've done in town are great, you know, at least with the softball fields, it's a start, and with the, you know, Mercy Springs, it's been great. But all I'm getting at is, is whatever we can do for Colorado Park. Not only does it help the baseball teams, but it helps the football team that has been just working their butts off. They're there every day throughout the football season. They work hard. It helps a lot of the kids stay out of trouble. It helps so much stuff, and I, and I understand the cost that it costs, you know, to, to do certain things these days, but the cost, it seems like every year, it goes up even more. So, so I, I'm just talking for our city. It's just the appreciation that, that I have for, for you guys putting the money out to, to make things happen, especially for those fields. They, they need everything they can get, so, so thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I was hoping that I could get to talk about this while everybody was in here, but I didn't get that opportunity. I'll put this where everybody out here can see. We're, I know you're going to be talking about the $100,000 grant. I'll turn it around for you in just a minute. I want the public to be able to see. And so I did want to say thank you to Feral Freedom, which is a nonprofit organization, which, you know, as you suggested, people can do a lot with a nonprofit, and a lot more can be done and will be done, but also I still feel like the Animal Advisory Committee is needed because we need education in the K through 12 schools. These, we need to do fundraising in the, in the way of these grants. We need more people to help, and therefore we need an Animal Advisory Committee. So I know you're going to be talking about this tonight. It's, it's a wonderful thing, and there's more where that is. There's plenty of money out there, you know, so spending it in the right places is what the public would like to see happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mary Onis and Council. Chris San Santos, representing the Office of Congressman John Duarte. Congratulations to Pee Wee Football and Pee Wee Cheer again, and our office would also like to thank you for the invitation to the city's Second Annual Save a Heart Day on Saturday. Look forward to stopping by. The number one cause of death for Americans aged 18 to 45, young men and women in the prime of their lives, is no longer car accidents or suicide in this country. It's fentanyl. Fentanyl killed 112,000 Americans in the year 2023. That is more than the combined population of Las Manas, Dos Palos, Outwater, Livingston, and Delhi. Congressman Duarte held a press conference on Friday with sheriffs, district attorneys, and representatives from San Joaquin, Stanislas, Merced, Madera, and Fresno counties to announce his introduction of the High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Program, better known as HIDA, Reauthorization Act of 2024. Border Patrol seized 26,700 pounds of fentanyl along the southern border in 2023, a 480% increase from 2020. Just this past summer, Merced County CHP officers made a $10.5 million narcotics bust just up the road in San Antone, which included 735,000 fentanyl pills, enough to kill every man, woman, and child in Merced County. The HIDA Reauthorization Act would reauthorize the HIDA program at $302 million annually through fiscal year 2030. That's a $22 million annual increase. It would create a new grant program within HIDA that individual HIDA, such as the Central Valley of California HIDA, can apply for to enhance their fentanyl seizure and interdiction activities. It would require better coordination between law enforcement agencies and immigration authorities to crack down on international drug cartels, and it would direct the U.S. Attorney General to assign no less than 16 Assistant United States Attorneys to individual HIDA's at a HIDA's request, to prioritize the investigation and prosecution of both organizations and individuals trafficking fentanyl to ensure that these criminals are prosecuted to the full extent of the law. At that press conference, we also heard from Kristi Hoffman and Kristi IU of Modesto. These are mothers who lost their sons of fentanyl poisoning. These aren't just statistics. These are people. These are people that had dreams and aspirations. Fentanyl can take a homeless man on the street, and fentanyl can take a decorated Army Combat Veteran from a wonderful family who fought for their country with honor. For far too many people in this chamber, I know that the battle to save our loved ones from the plague of addiction is personal. It's personal for my family. It's personal for the congressman's family, and the congressman already has bipartisan support for this bill, and he will see this battle through. I would also like to conclude by inviting everyone to the Second Merced Town Hall that we've been hosting. It's going to be at Merced Lau Family Community, Inc., at 1748 Miles Court, Suite Diaz and David, Merced, California, 95348, and that's going to be this Thursday, so tomorrow, February 8th, 2024. It's going to be at 6:00 PM, and we're so glad to have the Mon community open their doors to us so we can hear their concerns, but of course, everyone in Merced and Merced County is welcome to attend and make their concerns heard to the congressman as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can you, can you repeat the address for us one more time?
Yes, so I'll do the day and address. So it's going to be Thursday, February 8th, that's tomorrow at 6:00 PM. Merced Lau Family Community, Inc., that's 1748 Miles Court, Suite Diaz and David, Merced, California, ZIP Code 95348.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Blanche George, and I live in, in downtown Las Manas. I did have a thought, and I'm hoping that the city council, I'm sorry, I should have wrote you guys a letter, and just, there was a lot of balls in the air, but I'm hoping that maybe we did apply for that, you know, the grant for the shelter and other things. I wonder whether or not the city council would discuss among, well, not amongst themselves, but if they could discuss to figure out how maybe they can, you all can maybe write a letter, a letter of support as far as for the grant that was applied for. I don't know if the grant had a cover letter with your guys' endorsement saying, hey, you know, come help us, but then also if the public can go ahead and really, truly email Governor Newsom on, and asking them, kindly asking, we don't want to dirty the water, but if we could kindly ask them to support our town that we really need that money, and if he could kindly, you know, give it to us. But, but then also, you know, if there could be, if someone's out there, excuse me for not doing any kind of protocol, but if there's someone out there, some children that can, that have seen some of the issue, and their parents have explained to them what is, what they're seeing, that maybe there could be a class project, and they could send those, and I know that the governor prefers email, it's safer for him, but if they could upload and email those pictures of children asking, asking for help, so then that way, it all helps our city besides the individuals that are going to benefit from it, but we're all going to benefit from it. So, once again, if the city council can consider, and I don't know if this is correct, what I'm asking for, but if you could write a, a letter of consideration of help, it, it, it might help, but I don't know. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ballard. I wanted to thank you for having Ronnie's Landscape and our Public Works Department through all the rain that we've received, and how fast they were able to clean it up and take care of, so we're not flooding anywhere, but that's what I just want to let you know.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Kathy Uli, resident of Las Manas. A while back, I spoke to you all about the desperate need for low-cost spay and neuter services in Las Manas, and honestly, at that time, I thought there was absolutely zero hope and that there was not any kind of change ahead, but I kept asking and complaining, you know, and Levi Fistori with Feral Freedom, however, just kept plugging away at this, and he has been instrumental in changing the face of what's happening for cats in this community, at least right now. We do have low-cost spay and neuter clinic once a week, and I don't know how much the community is aware of that, but it is going on weekly. Levi has the animals transported to the Bay Area where they are spayed and neutered. These are cats only at this time, and it is $50 an animal, and that includes vaccinations, the spay neuter, and a microchip, which is one heck of a bargain. And so I just want to recognize Levi and Feral Freedom for all his work that he's been doing. He is the face of Feral Freedom. It is a tiny organization, and he is absolutely tireless, and I am not kidding. I, I was actually expecting to see him here this evening, and I'm sure he got hung up at the spay neuter clinic. So, anyway, Levi has been doing an amazing job, and I just really feel that we need to recognize Feral Freedom and Levi. I'd also like to take a couple of moments to address another issue in our city that you have heard me discuss before, LED lighting. Back in January, I sent all the council and planning commissioners a link to darksky.org's webpage, particularly on the dark sky friendly outdoor lighting for policymakers. I don't know if y'all have had a chance to take a look at that. I hope you have. If you've misplaced the email, deleted it, whatever, please feel free to ask me to resend the link. I'd be happy to. There are five principles for responsible outdoor lighting. They are useful. Use light only as it is needed. All light should be, should have a clear purpose. Consider how the use of light will impact the area, including wildlife and their habitats. It should be targeted. Direct light so it only falls where it's needed. Use shielding and careful aiming to target the direction of the light beam so that it points downward and does not spill beyond where it is needed. Low level. Light should not be brighter than necessary. Use the lowest light level required. Be mindful of surface conditions, as some surfaces may reflect more light into the night sky than intended. Controlled. Use light only when it is needed. Use controls such as timers, motion detectors, to ensure that light is available when needed, and dimmed when possible, and turned off when not needed. And warm-colored, which is like, I think, probably the hugest issue we're facing right now, as cities all across, not just in America, but the world, have been rushing to make their carbon footprint smaller and going to LED lighting. In the beginning, LED lighting was pretty much exclusively the blue-white cool light that we associate with it, but the warmer hues have come in, and they are available for all purposes now, including all sorts of city all sorts of city lights and just every... so everything can be made to a warmer, more eye-friendly, and also, you know, the doctors, scientists know that the color of light really affects the way that our bodies respond. Well, it's this circadian rhythm, and I think I mentioned this before, and I'm not going to go into a big, long thing about it. But it's really important, and I think that as time goes forward, we're going to see everyone starting to address this issue as light pollution with LED lights becomes more of a problem. So, you know, as Las Banas moves forward, I think we can and should be implementing policies to create a city that is in the forefront of the future of lighting, rather than hanging behind and waiting till... you know, we could go there now. Every light fixture in this town could be addressed and changed, and make it a much more pleasant environment, better for everybody. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councilmen, as well as the members, citizens of Las Banas. Two things I want to discuss. Number one, first, let me commend, we are so lucky to have the world's best, to my opinion, sweeper drivers in this city. These guys are proficient, they're hardworking, and they're very dedicated to their job. And I know they have to be frustrated, because if you've ever been downtown between the hours of 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM, it is clearly posted, Monday through Friday, no parking, because that's when the sweepers can come through to clean. Because people do throw trash in the streets, and right now with all the rains, that stuff's going down the storm drains, because my sweeper drivers can't clean it because there's people parked there. I have counted as many as 40 cars on a given day. Some of those cars have actually been there a week. And why do people do this? Because they know they can get away with it. Nobody does anything to enforce the law. That's number one. Number two also involves traffic, and that is the problem with your program for those... the pads, the, I guess, the, like, speed bumps, the comforts. And the reason there's a problem there is because there is nowhere in that form to have any contingencies that might, besides the flow of traffic, be important to consider. My block alone has been turned down twice for these bumps. Now, my next-door neighbor has a four-year-old who's autistic, who does not know the difference between the sidewalk and the street, and he has been rescued once. Thankfully, he's not dead. My neighbor across the street suffers from macular degeneration. Virtually, he's blind. So his next-door neighbor, when they go for coffee at the neighbor's house, has to help escort him. Now, if you ever want to see the races, you want to see donuts in the pedestrian area in the city, the residential area, then come on down to Santa Ana Street, because that's what you're going to see. They speed. Now granted, when they had the monitors out there, there wasn't. It was a very slow period. Come out in the summer. Santa Ana Freeway is no longer in Santa Ana, California. It has moved to Las Banas, California. So I just want to know, I know you guys have a great deal of power, please talk to the Traffic Safety Committee and ask them to include something in that form to... because I've known people who've had their cars totaled, people who have had their cars damaged by speeding drivers. So what are we going to do about it? Can we have something added to that form so that people examine not just the flow of traffic, but examine why there's a need for a speed cushion there? Thank you.
I have some things that I'd like to have passed out to you guys, some information, if you don't mind. I wanted to bring up something that's important. It's going along... it's going on in the city of Las Banas. It's electronic harassment. I don't know if anybody is aware of what that is. It's basically... it's very horrible, but I happen to be a victim of it. It's a lot of harassment that's going on in the city of Las Banas. It's spreading all over the city, and it's not right. I'm just... I just like to see people be more aware of it. And there's a picture of a billboard on there that happens to be off of Highway 99 and towards Modesto. And I was wondering if it'd be possible to bring something like that to the city of Las Banas to advertise, because it's a very horrible thing that's going on in the city of Las Banas. So I don't know if that is possible or not, but to spread the word, because electronic harassment is very horrible, and it's also illegal. So I just wanted to spread the word and let people know what's going on in the city, because that's a very horrible thing. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, your staff, fellow members of the public, I too want to come up here and thank our city staff personnel, hard workers. They've been doing a tremendous job clearing debris, clearing falling branches from decane or just trees suffering from the effects of the environment. And to that extent, I want to say that our staff, our city staff from the department on down to entry level have been doing tremendous jobs since my wife and I moved here in 1992. They brought up a lot of key issues and ideas, from parks and recreation to the city streets, et cetera. As you know, it took me a while to learn, too, but it takes a long time for some of these things to get implemented. And as we are, as the finance director had stated previously, that most of this budget, the things that we're working on, is from the public budget workshop that was entered into and approved by the last city council. So again, that was under Mayor Furia. So a lot of these things have been happening because of that. And I also want to say that, no, we don't have lazy staff members. No, they should not be fired, as has been stated before here. And to the extent, I want to also talk about the water problem that was talked about before. Had various discussions regarding the issues that we're facing regarding the water issue, the treatment plant, the restrictions from the state, what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do anymore. So those things have been talked about. I know that there was misinformation that somehow that had not been talked about before. But again, we have some tremendous people, highly qualified, highly experienced, and they're dedicated to bettering the lives of everyone here in the city of Las Banas. I'd also like to have a little more transparency. Again, we've talked about this before, about the consent items, consent agenda. We should have as much public input, as much public participation, as much public oversight as possible. Again, that's basic civics. When people come up here, they're asking for questions, and they like answers. If you could take note, use your time reporting out at the end of the meeting to talk about those things, to at least acknowledge the fact that people aren't just coming in here and listening to themselves speak. Like to also ask about the recent city hall closure. Why was the citizens given such a short amount of time for this city closure? A lot of folks, they planned their time around, coming here for, to conduct city business. Sometimes they take time off, yet the city hall was closed, and they couldn't conduct whatever business they were wanting to. And again, it was a very short amount of time. If you could advance that as much as possible. Last of all, I'd like to know, to what benefit did that have for the citizens? What was the topic? What was discussed? And again, how was that beneficial to the citizens? Lastly, I'd like to talk about commissions. And we have citizens, very highly qualified, dedicated, they've dedicated their lives to raising their children here, and they want to give back. In particular, Mrs. Kathy Ballard. She is one of the most tremendously talented persons I've met, keen on numbers. She understands them and knows how to spend money wisely. I think it's a loss to the city to not have appointed her, and again, there's no reason for that. She was qualified, she was interested, she was committed, yet she wasn't appointed. I mean, that's your prerogative, but why? Why deny somebody the ability to give back to the community, especially somebody so well-qualified? And what does that do for other people who want to possibly apply for other commissions? Because historically, we've had a very hard time filling these commission vacancies, and yet when somebody wants to, they're denied the opportunity. Again, that shows a... I think it's a bad spirit. Thank you very much.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, council staff. Just a quick update, actually, we're having a merchant event tomorrow. We have actually partnered up with the Las Banas Chamber of Commerce, so we're really excited about the merchant event, which will be held tomorrow. You want to say it? Well, it's going to be held tomorrow at the Kimmy Stitches 510 I Street, and, sorry. Overall, it's going to be held tomorrow at Kimmy Stitches 510 I Street. And so then, for the people that can't make it tomorrow at 8:30 AM, we will be having another one, February 22nd, at 5:30 PM at Biggins Texas Barbecue. And that location is 609 I Street. And so the purpose for this is to have open discussion for merchants to come together and collaborate for upcoming events like St. Patrick's Pub Crawl, March 17th, it's going to be on a Sunday, as well as the Wine and Beer Stroll, April 27th, on a Saturday, and also the Farmer's Market, May 16th, and that will be running through October 24th. That will be on a Thursday. So please come join us tomorrow. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and audience, and it's a pleasure to see you all. I would like to... I'm Tony Whitehurst, Vice President of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here proudly to report that what you just heard was one of the bits of evidence of how the chamber and the Downtown Association are combining our efforts and putting our assets together, trying to make some progress for the community to help develop all of the businesses in the community, which, in fact, you will find clearly spelled out in the agreement that the chamber has in its contract with the city, which we're very proud. And the relationship is not simply a coincidence, it's a contractual agreement. And we are developing a more routine report system where we can... which we can use to bring the city up on our progress in the various different categories of obligations that we've gladly accepted. And we encourage you to look that agreement over and find out how well we are trying to comply with it and to progress. And we've had Roy Todd here on a somewhat irregular basis. He has transferred that responsibility back to the Chamber of Board of Directors and its administration. You'll be seeing us more often. And it's a pleasure to have such good news to report. So our membership is growing, and we believe that a lot of it is due to the fact that people are not... people we solicit as potential members are no longer asking us, what's the chamber going to do for me? They're beginning to ask now, knowing that what the chamber does for the entire community, they say, what can I do for the chamber? And we're gaining members that way, and it's working. So thank you for the support you've given us, and we accept the opportunity to keep providing those services. And thank you all for the moments to speak. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public forum. Let's move on to Item 7, consideration of approval of the consent agenda.
Items on the consent agenda, excuse me, are as follows. Warrant numbers 242926 to 243180, and the amount of $3,397,573.75. Minutes for the December 6, 2023 city council meeting. Minutes for the January 3, 2024 city council meeting. Minutes for the January 17, 2024 city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6729, approving the acceptance of a $100,000 UC Davis Corret Shelter Medicine Grant via their California for All Animals program, and amending the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 budget by increasing the appropriation amount for expenditures and revenues in the amount of $100,000. City Council Resolution Number 6730, ratifying the city manager's approval of the employment agreement with the Public Works Director/City Engineer, Charles Bergson. City Council Resolution Number 6731, appointing Deborah DJ Barcellos, Harriet Schott, Stephen Soares, and Stephen Soares to the Measure P Citizens Oversight Committee with terms ending December 31, 2026. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right. Thank you for that. Do I have any items, any members of the council wish to discuss? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to pull Item E and Item F for discussion.
E and F. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, let's start with Item E. For this, we'll go to Police Chief Raina.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
For the city of Las Banas, the $50,000 that's going for spay and neutering, and also the $25,000 of the $100,000 grant going for veterinary services for the spay and neutering. I did have a chance to speak to the state coordinator. Her name is... her name is Allison Cardona. And, you know, I'm hoping that as time goes on, there's more money that's going to be coming down from the state of California to help out in this area. The one thing that I, you know, I would... I don't know if we can get assurance on this, but with the vouchers that are going to be given out for spaying and neutering, do we have anything in place to try to make sure that people who are accepting these vouchers are going to actually use them and not just take them? And then we have a voucher that's just floating out there, not being used.
Councilmember, that's a good question, something actually that we talk about at the staff level. So that has been our challenge over the years, is vouchers. So we would assemble a number of vouchers per year, and we would put requirements on them, such as you have to live in Las Banas. We require evidence such as that. But when we're building our budget, we also have to account for when the vouchers are used, where they're used. And sometimes the challenges were finding a vet, a local vet, that would take the voucher. Sometimes we would have to follow up with the pet owner to ensure that they are going to use it, or when are they going to use it? And so we would find ourselves oftentimes at close to the end of the fiscal year, and we were chasing people down to find out the status. And there were a number of excuses sometimes. Sometimes it was, I can't get an appointment, I'm having to go out of town, I found a vet in another town, they're not going to accept the voucher, my animal's sick, my animal is, you know, pregnant, animal has... is not around anymore. And so we would have to then use a small amount of time to reissue vouchers, or... so it was a big mess. So we do plan on doing vouchers again. So we do, uh, plan on doing vouchers again, but our goal is going to be to bring veterinarian services to the shelter and to continue to do that. We are already doing that. Too early to say, but we actually have, um, potentially more good news in that area coming. We're also, um, pursuing with, uh, some of our partners, the idea of bringing like mobile services, uh, to the shelter and, um, having events. And, um, in order to do that, you need money, right? And so now we have all this money pouring in, which is fantastic. And so those are some of the things that we would like to bring to the shelter. So I think it's safe to say that we are headed in the right direction, and there's really good things coming, um, out of our local shelter.
Thank you. You know, and I, I'm not sure if veterinary, uh, people who are getting their degrees, doctorate degrees in veterinary, uh, are similar to medical doctors, where a lot of medical doctors who are trying to, uh, work off their loans, uh, can work in areas where there may be low-income population. So, um, I, I don't know if that's the case in veterinary schools, where they can work their loans off by practicing in an area for a period of time of, of, you know, if you have a population that has a certain income level that can qualify for that. But it might be something that, you know, staff can look into, um, and perhaps the state coordinator can help just, you know, help us out in that area to figure out if we can get some student vets in here that are, you know, have their degree, their license, but they've got to work those loans off. So that, that might be another alternative to get help here, uh, temporarily to get these vouchers, um, used and the animals spayed, uh, before incidents happen. Because, you know, that's, that's the whole purpose of this, and of course, we can't control that i- if we give a voucher out to someone. But I'm hoping that, you know, with the veterinary services coming on, that, that time could be coordinated more closely for people who are getting vouchers, to make sure that they're getting in and getting those animals spayed and neutered, um, rather than just handing them to them and saying, you know, go search and find. So I, again, I appreciate all the services your department is doing, um, how this grant was acquired. And, um, I'm hoping, you know, there's, there's certainly going to be a learning curve in this, I'm sure. But, uh, you know, I keep hope that it's, it's going to be a better situation than what we've had in past history. And I think someone spoke to the fact that we're, we're going to have a vet here, um, is it weekly or monthly? In, in our community, and perhaps, um, I, I think when I talked to the coordinator, the coordinator had mentioned that we had a vet that, uh, could, could possibly be working with us already here in our community, uh, to make sure that these vouchers are used appropriately.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. And, and yes, we've had that in place for a few months now, so.
Okay.
So it's, again, and I think we're moving in the right direction, and this is just a, another example of good things that are coming out of the shelter. This grant actually, uh, sorry, I know Sergeant Mendez from the Code Enforcement Division applied for this, um, but it was mentioned, Levi, story from Feral Freedom, who actually is here, uh, was instrumental in helping Sergeant Mendez, uh, apply for this and get this money. And so that money is going to come to the Los, uh, Los Banos community, and it's going to benefit all these great things that we talk about. So it's, 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 uh, it's, it's good. And, um, some other, like I said, other things coming that are a little too early to mention, um, that I just heard about this week, two good things, but, um, they'll be coming soon, and we'll be able to report on it. It's just too early because we have a commitment on these things, but.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you again, and thank you to Levi and everyone who helped, uh, manage to get this grant. It's, it's well needed, and, huh, you know, I, I think we just, I, I don't want to say we deserve it, but it's well needed. I've driven around the city and, uh, at nighttime, and it's, it's like all the animals come out, you know, especially the cats, you know, the, it's, there's hardly not a street that I've driven on that there's not a loose cat running around somewhere. So, um, it's really unfortunate that, that we're getting there, and, and I'm kind of seeing that perhaps things are getting to the level of where we were in oh eight, oh nine, when we had the recession fall. Uh, it's, it's just a multitude of cats that are being produced out there, and it's hard to get that under control, uh, once, once it's out of control. But, um, this, this is a really good start, and thank you again for the answer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Lammert?
Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just, uh, in, in my, in my past, uh, the way we might be able to monitor the vouchers, is once we find the vets that will, uh, actually honor them, is if a person, if someone, uh, says and comes up and said, hey, is there any way possible we can get a voucher? Well, we give them the, the, you know, the location of what vets are going to utilize it. They take their, their animal, their cat, their dog, to that vet, the vet would actually call you back and say, hey, do you have this voucher available? We got a, uh, so-and-so here. This way, we can monitor to make sure that it, that it is going to get utilized, instead of just not sitting on a table somewhere.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we would give a, a list of, um, approved vets, but sometimes it was just, we would give out so many that just trying to keep track of them, it was just, it was a little time consuming.
Correct, correct.
So, but, you know, we obviously want to be efficient.
The vet that have opportunity, not even get the voucher to the person, but just, uh, say, you know, go to these vets, they will contact us, they, we have the voucher available. You know, they, they've come here to approach us, and they said, you know, contact whoever it is that has the vouchers. That way, we know that voucher's getting utilized.
Yes, sir.
And, and once we, you know, I was, uh, when we first moved here, we adopted, uh, you know, a little doggy from the animal shelter. And actually, we couldn't pick up, you know, our dog until it was actually neutered, which I think that should be the correct way anyway, uh, when we adopted, you know, and that's part of the procedure. But, you know, people that are just coming up, you know, needing to get their, you know, their cats or cat or dog, spayed or neutered, just can't afford, but they can get the voucher, but then, then just go through the, the procedure, you know, to help them, yes, we got the voucher, but go to these, you know, we got two vets that honor our vouchers, you know, go to that vet, they'll contact us, and then we can supply them with the, uh, either, you know, fax or a copy, say, yeah, we got the voucher, you know, take care of it. That way, we know that that voucher's getting utilized and not just sitting, like you say, you know, waiting for a year to get it.
Yeah, agreed.
I appreciate you.
Just real quick, I just want to say thanks to you and Levi and Sergeant Mendez for doing the, doing the work to make this, to make this happen. This is outstanding. I was very happy to see the allocation of funds broken down into education, microchipping. So it wasn't just, hey, put it in a pot and good luck. So I was very happy to see that there was a strategy in place for, for what was going to happen, so. And then, you know, same, same thing, I've adopted animals from the shelter before, and it's, you know, really the only assurance we have is if they leave the door spayed or neutered, right? And so, I mean, I know that's not in a perfect world, but whatever we can do to kind of help facilitate that, or if we need to do anything education-wise to maybe get that message across, just let us know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I just had a quick question. Is there a expiration on these vouchers at all? So do you do them in wave? So if we say start at January one, hand it out vouchers, you had enough where it would only go for six months, and then after that, whichever's not using six months, you can deem them as being lost or tabled or whatever, and then reissue new ones based on what we have available in funding?
Yes, so years ago, it was, uh, no, years ago, no. And then we changed that, we put about six months on it. And, uh, I can go on and on about vouchers.
That's good enough, you guys went through it.
But, uh, but, uh, just to answer your question, we would even get vouchers returned from vets in the mail that were expired. And so it was just, it was a mess, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
All right, let's move on to item F, and this one would be for our city manager. He's out at a conference. Did you have a question for council, or?
Well, um, the question I had, I was hoping that the new employee would be here tonight, uh, to introduce themselves to council. But I, I would just like to know a little bit of background about this employee, you know, what his qualifications were, where he's from. I, I see on the agenda that he's from the Sacramento area, but there's nothing there about this employee. So I know this is a confirmation, uh, to hire him, but I, I would like maybe, I don't know, Mayor, if the city manager has discussed something with you about this gentleman, um, that you could share with us, or perhaps, uh, our city attorney? I don't know, but I, I would like to have a little bit of information about him.
I'm sorry to tell you, but I have not been involved in the hiring process for the city engineer, public works director. My involvement was writing up the contract after the city manager determined that he was going to appoint, uh, this gentleman to this position. Pursuant to our code, it's the city manager's, um, authority, uh, for the appointment. And it's the city council's, uh, part of this is just to approve the terms of the contract. I can talk to the terms of the contract, but I don't have any specific information regarding the appointee. I can tell you that the terms of the contract are based on our template that we use for all management employees, and that, um, the salary range would be a salary that's within the salary range, uh, determined by the city council. But I, I don't have any specific information regarding, uh, the appointee's background or anything. I think it was the city manager and the H R director, who's not here as well, um, that was involved in the actual appointment. And there was a recruitment, uh, through our, I don't know which recruiting firm we use to recruit, but I can answer any questions you have regarding the contract, but I don't think that's what you're asking.
No, no, it's not. And thank you.
Councilmember Lewis, um, I think quite a few of us also sat on the interview panels with, um, Mr. Bergson. And Mr. Bergson has worked up and, up and down the state, including in Southern California, for quite a few cities, Malibu, Compton, as well as up in the Bay Area, um, and then in the Sacramento area as well. He's been, he's served as, uh, Public Works Director, Community Economics, uh, Director, as well as a city manager in, in several capacities throughout the last, I believe, twenty-five years or so. Yeah, I'm sure he'll have an opportunity to introduce himself, um, probably at the next council meeting or, or sometime in the next, uh, couple.
Thank you for the information. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Do you want to vote on E and F separately?
No, we can just.
All, all at once? Okay. All right, do I have a motion for the, for item seven, the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion, uh, Mayor, to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Begonia?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Let's move on to item eight, Sunrise Ranch Park Conceptual Design Presentation. For this, we'll go to Park and Recreation Director, Joe Hyne.
All right, good evening. Thank you. So I have an exciting project, uh, to present tonight, an update for, um, and we will be requesting, um, city council's direction on this item. And it is, uh, a brand-new park in town. It's, uh, the park is going to be in the Sunrise Ranch, um, subdivision, and, of course, at this time, it's, uh, called Sunrise Ranch Park. So, yeah, the vision is to create a new park. I'll be going over the site overview. We'll talk about some park master plan and some general site requirements, as well as a timeline. So hopefully, this one's an easy, uh, page here to talk about, but the benefits of parks include just encouraging active lifestyles. I think one of the big ones is neighborhood identity, uh, that can also often be forgotten, but, um, we, we're looking for parks that can benefit all ages, um, reduce anxiety, and just generally help the, uh, health of the, uh, the community as well as the neighborhood. So just kind of getting into some of the, the details of, of constructing parks, um, we look at classifications. So in this case, um, Sunrise Ranch kind of fits into that pocket park, neighborhood park, um, standard. A pocket park is typically less than an acre, and a neighborhood park is typically over an acre. This particular location is right about an acre. So you'll see that has different service, uh, radius, um, service areas. And what I mean by that is, uh, access to the park. So in a pocket park sense, it's about a point-two-five mile radius service area, and a neighborhood park has a point-five mile radius, and I'll show you some maps on that. And so you see general neighborhood, um, type, uh, playground amenities, playgrounds, picnic tables, barbecues, benches, and shade. As you get into the neighborhood parks, you might see, uh, sports courts, things like that. So we have quite a few examples in town. It's, uh, definitely our most common type of park. Everything from Davis Park to Gardens Three, Neighborhood Park, Orchard Terrace is another one. So, again, the suggested and required amenities, we have quite a few that you're going to see throughout, so anything from, uh, shade structures, playgrounds, of course. Lighting has been a popularly, um, requested item, fencing as well. And then, of course, you always see trees, pathways, and we definitely want to increase our signage throughout our parks. So just kind of taking a look at Los Banos, um, you can see that there's quite a bit of coverage for pocket parks here, that's that quarter-mile radius. And then as you go to overlapping it with both pocket and neighborhood parks, you do see that our community does have, uh, quite a bit of access, um, to parks, uh, within their service area, which is, um, definitely an accomplishment on, on all the past parks that have been brought on. And, you know, we want to consider things like crossing busy roads, all that, so it's definitely nice to have these neighborhood, um, park locations accessible to, um, our communities. So speaking specifically about the Sunrise Ranch location, it is, um, going to be located in Lighting and Landscape District number nine. That is the district that will be paying for the operation of the park. The construction will be paid for out of the Sunrise Ranch Park Development Fund, which is an impact fee, um, uh, based off of the construction of the housing itself. The location is that dead middle, that Lot D that you see in the middle there. That is at Martin Street, Manual Court, and Evelyn Court. You can see streets on three sides, and then a couple houses on the, uh, south side there. So this is kind of just another zoomed-in version of that. You can just see it's, it's pretty close to a rectangle, square-type shape. This is a site photo. You can see that there are sidewalks in place there, those, those two houses there on the south end, and again, it's, um, surrounded by roads otherwise. So this is an exciting page. This is the concept, um, that we are proposing tonight. You know, a- as we kind of step back and we talk about, um, the neighborhood park and the pocket park, we, um, as a staff and, and with our consultants, identified that, you know, Los Banos does have a lot of neighborhood parks, and, and this park does need to meet those, those types of needs. It, it needs to be, um, something for all ages. It needs to meet, um, you know, that, that accessible, um, uh, location for neighbors to come and enjoy. So we wanted to keep that, but we also wanted to just continue to expand the offerings as a community as a whole. So when you look at this park location, some of the things that I like to highlight here is you do have some standard amenities, like the shade structure and picnic tables, which I think is really, uh, an important amenity to include. You also see an outside fence, um, that's about, I think it's a four-foot fence, um, on the outside. Again, that's to prevent kids from running into that street that surrounds the three sides. But you also see some unique amenities. So we have some, um, uh, if you look at item eight, you see some, uh, concrete cornhole, which we don't have anywhere in our, in our city presently. That's a permanent cornhole. We have exercise stations, we have, um, a climbing apparatus, which is basically just one of those big rope, that's that zigzag there, I think number four. And those are becoming very popular and, and can be good for, um, older age groups, like, uh, say, seven and up age groups. And then when you look at that blue kind of L shape that's getting covered by, um, uh, trees in, in this particular concept, that's an embankment slide, that's a hillside slide, something that we don't really have in our community and can be very good for younger ages. So that, we really wanted to kind of include these amenities that still provide the playground and still provide the, um, activities of a typical park, but also just kind of bring a different amenity than we've typically had. We do have the half-court basketball court as well in here, and then there's some grass space there, um, for, you know, uh, frisbee or soccer or anything like that, that you might, like, um, play out there. So really, I think this park does a good job, this concept does a good job of providing for all ages. So I, I can imagine seniors using the, the walking pass, um, even the cornhole. I can imagine, um, kids, of course, loving all the unique amenities that are in here. And just given that this, this particular park is very close to the junior high, um, I think that, uh, amenities like the basketball court, like the cornhole, um, again, like the shade structure and exercise equipment can definitely, um, support those age groups as well. So, um, overall, I'm really pleased with how the design, uh, came out. And there's about forty-five trees that'll be planted as part of this project. And again, a- as you can see, there's, there's none existing on the site currently. Funding, uh, for the project is from the Sunrise Ranch Park Fund. That is a, an impact fee, as I mentioned, uh, that's based on the building of the houses on site. There are still some houses, um, being built on site, so this fund is still collecting revenue. This particular concept is currently under budget, um, so we are, um, in a position where we're comfortable with, with proceeding, um, but we are still collecting in this fund. So a proposed timeline is, of course, tonight. We're, we're seeking council approval for the design, the concept, and/or comments on the concept, um, to move forward. This project is ready to enter the, into the engineering phase. That will be this spring here, if, if approved, and we would like to then release, um, the bid as soon as possible, but we're estimating about June twenty twenty-four. At that point, um, we'll go through the bid process, which typically takes about a couple of months between putting it out to bid and getting it brought back to council. And then we're going to look to construct as soon as possible after that, um, with a, with a grand opening, um, following a maintenance period, uh, for the landscape that is constructed. So we're trying to get this, um, park, uh, constructed as soon as possible. There are, of course, a majority of the housing, houses there are, um, sold and, and being lived in, so we want to get, um, them an amen. so we want to get them an amenity for that site as well as for the community as a whole. And thank you, and that's my presentation. If I can receive comments from city council?
Any comments or questions from members of council? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and for the additional information. In the fiscal impact of this project, it looks like the total cost is going to be somewhere around $148,000, you know, and some change. So the, and that includes the engineering.
So the total cost is probably going to be around 1.1 to 1.3 million for the construction. The $148,000 is the design and engineering.
Okay. So that brings it up to about $1,005,000.
Sorry. 1.1 to 1.3, including the engineering.
Okay, because it's $1,375,000 for the project.
That's the total available currently in the Sunrise Ranch Park Development Fund. So I think the project, including engineering, is between 1.1 and 1.3 is the estimated probable cost.
Okay. So if it goes over the 1.3, and I understand you're still collecting funds from houses that are being built, do you anticipate that there's going to be enough money collected to finish the park without?
Yes, we, yes, we do. We do feel comfortable with that. That's one of the reasons why we're bringing the concept forward. However, as we get closer to the bidding process and we get a closer look at the exact cost estimate, at that point, we can take items like the shade structure and make them bid alternates and make that decision when the bid comes out. Additionally, as you mentioned, you know, there is still funding being collected. Even on the high end of the probable cost, we still have about $100,000 in there that we are, that we have a little bit of a cushion currently. And that 1.1 to 1.3 does include a 15% contingency amount included in that probable cost. So we do build that in as well to make sure that, you know, if there's any change orders or any major aspects to this that change. So we do feel comfortable now, but if it did get, let's say, prices got accelerated over the summer, then yes, we would evaluate bid alternates as well as other funding sources if the amenities were desired at that point.
Okay. So in other words, you'll be able to stay within budget?
We believe so, yes. That's what we're in.
All right. Thank you.
Feel comfortable with.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Steph. It's just a real nice design. I like some of the new features that we don't see in town. So I like that you guys are starting to implement some of those, I guess, activities on these parks. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm personally very excited about the embankment slide. You see those throughout the state and nationwide, and they've become very popular for all age groups.
Councilmember Begonia?
Pretty much stole my, what I was going to say. But fantastic. I like that there's a little bit of everything for everyone. One of the requests from the people in that neighborhood is have lots of trees, right? Because then, with shade, obviously, the trees take time to grow, but they'll be there. Fantastic design. You keep using every inch of every park, and that's really a great thing. I never like to see just a place structure and a big old acre of grass. So thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lambert?
Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. The lighting, do we have those added in there? Because I didn't see them.
So presently, we don't have lighting included. One of the things that we did with the Shaughnessy Village Park, which we are hoping to have mobilized once it dries out, is because putting in electrical, it really adds a massive cost to both the design as well as the construction in terms of bringing an electrical engineer on, as well as laying the conduit. So because this isn't a ball field type situation, what we looked at with Shaughnessy, which we may look at with this location as well, is using excess funds to have our own staff install the solar lights that we have installed at quite a few of our parks throughout town. That's really just a process of buying, purchasing the poles, and then having our staff put the footings in. So we kind of felt that that might be a better approach, just conserve some funding.
Roger that. And barbecue pits.
Sorry, there is barbecue pits included.
I've seen those in there, but, you know, we're, I know the state is having issues with, you know, the clean air. Is there something that, which I do see, I mean, people still do go out and do a little barbecue, but.
Certainly, that's an item that we can have for discussion here. It was a highly requested amenity at the public meeting we had in September, and that's the main, I would say, main drive for including it. We do obviously have quite a few barbecue pits throughout the community, but certainly open to a discussion on that item.
Well, what I'm saying, because I love bar, trust me, I love barbecue. I don't want to get away from it, okay? The thing is, if we put them in there, and then by the time next year, they do away with it, I mean, I'd hate to put something in there that's going to cost us, and then we have to try to write it. Is there an alternative? I don't know if there's going to be an alternative, but, you know, it's going to be, I'd hate to see it, we install, you know, these barbecue pits around the picnic tables, and then next year, the state of California says, okay, that, you know, because I know it's coming. I mean, I run the business.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's an amenity that is easy enough for us to discuss during the engineering process here. So if, you know, we received direction from council tonight, that's one of the items that we can look at to see how we can make that sustainable, or if that is a valuable item to be including. Because, you know, you're correct, we want to be in a position to be able to pivot. But this, because that's an amenity that really doesn't, you know, it's an item that's mounted, footed on after the fact. So that's something that's really very easy for us to be able to change direction on.
Before I go to Councilmember Lewis, I'm just going to say, my opinion is, give the people what they want, and if the state takes it away, the state takes it away, but we didn't take it away. So, I mean, that's just, that's kind of my two cents. If the people want it, let's give it to them, and if it's something later on down the road, we got to deal with. So that's just my two cents. Councilmember Lewis?
My suggestion would be perhaps contacting the Valley Air District and find out where things are, because, you know, you have your advocates out there who are pushing to do away with any kind of open burning. I know effective January 1st of next year, there'll be no open burning for farmers and they're cutting waste, but there's been no restriction at this point in regards to barbecue pits, or, you know, people have their wood burning pits in their backyard for warmth and, but yeah, things could change in the future, but it might be something you want to talk to the CEO about to see if it's worthwhile, you know, taking that away in the park versus leaving it there for the time being.
Absolutely.
And certainly, you know, we don't want to spend money, you know, in anticipation that, you know, a year down the line, the state's going to do away with something, or two years down the line, because then, you know, it just kind of upsets the public that once they had something, now it's not there. And they don't really understand why a lot of times these things happen. So it's just being a little bit proactive on that to see if you can get ahead of the game.
Absolutely. It's something that we can do our homework on.
Any other questions or comments? No? And my understanding is just to, recommendation would be to move forward to the next step?
That would be staff's recommendation, yes.
Okay. All right. So do you need a motion from us?
Yes, please.
All right. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Lambert?
Mayor, I'll make the motion for department to go ahead with this design presentation.
All right. Do I have a second? Councilmember Begonia?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Let's move on to item nine. Don't go far, Joe. Pickleball Courts Conceptual Design Presentation.
Okay. Another big project for us. This is the pickleball court project. We have presented on this item a couple times before, and today, we have an exciting update for it. So just a background for those that don't know what pickleball is, it's a racket paddle sport that is very similar to tennis, and you'll see that the courts are very similar to tennis. They were identified as part of the park's master plan process, is a highly requested amenity from the public, and currently, we're seeking funding through the ARPA account, which is the American Rescue Plan Act funding. So here's a couple pickleball court examples. You'll find that they are all a little bit different in terms of supporting amenities and setup, but those are, the courts for pickleball, they are very, very similar to tennis courts in almost every regard, except for, of course, dimensions and total size. So this project is proposed to be located at the Ag Sports Complex, which is located off of 165 at 700 North Mercy Springs Road. The project includes fencing, lighting, connecting sidewalk, and supporting amenities. And you can see in that picture what a pickleball is. It looks like a wiffle ball there, and of course, there's a paddle associated with it. So the site that we're looking at here at Ag Sports Complex is kind of there in the north middle of the park. It's between the dog park and the north softball field. This park has a brand-new restroom that was constructed last summer, as well as a large parking lot. There are other amenities on site that support these types of activities, such as softball, a large playground, I believe it might be our largest playground, as well as horseshoe pits. So this really, this park really has kind of an identity as Bullford Neighborhood Park in terms of it does have a playground, it is walkable to the St. Francis neighborhood, but overall, as far as how it serves the community, it's very much a community park, very much a destination location. And staff has evaluated that pickleball would really fit in well with that in terms of, again, benefiting from the restroom, the large parking lot, a good fit with the dog park, as well as the sports fields. So you can see on the site conditions here, to the left, there is the restroom that's really very close to the pickleball court location. You can see those are brand-new facilities with concessions as well. You will see that the space that we are proposing is currently undeveloped, and it is right next to the dog park. We'll share that same fence line, as well as have those picnic tables that kind of are raised above what would be the pickleball courts. So this is the proposed concept for the pickleball courts in that location. Quite a bit to highlight here, of course, there is nine courts that are being proposed. That's pretty much the maximum that we, the designer could fit into this space. Eight courts was really the goal, just for tournament purposes, just for future expansion purposes and total use. So you'll see kind of an entry plaza space here that really benefits from that large parking lot, as well as a center aisle way. We felt like this would, pickleball is very much a social sport, it's very much a group-setting sport, and we really wanted to create that environment for the pickleball players in town. We anticipate that this is a sport that will continue to grow, grow with all age groups, including teens, through adults, and of course, seniors. There is a connecting sidewalk in the middle there that will connect to ultimately some existing sidewalk to provide a second entrance. You'll see a couple spaces of bio-retention area. That's because of the amount of impervious pavement that we're putting into this project. You'll see some shade structures there that, of course, will support the hot days out there. There are not existing trees on site, and it's something that we wanted to limit the total of trees due to the root conditions, due to the leaves, that sort of stuff. So again, getting back into the courts, you'll see that there is lighting there. That is one of the more expensive elements of the project, so that is something that staff is evaluating as far as the total cost of the project. And then, this project also includes fencing that wraps the whole concept. On the outside perimeter, that is a six-foot fence, and you can see that there are closable gates there that allow access or limit access to the facilities. And overall, just really trying to maximize the amount of space that's on site there. So you can see that the location, it kind of dropped it here, so you can see, and of course, that dog park is complete, the Google image just isn't quite updated. So it really is something that would fit nicely into that space, and that's currently undeveloped. Looking at funding, we are looking at American Rescue Plan Act funding for this project. The estimate is between 1.9 and 2.4. That does include design and contingency, and we, staff is evaluating items such as lighting for alternate bidding, which would allow staff to evaluate that, as well as council to evaluate whether to include those amenities as we get into awarding the contract for the bid, if we get to that point. So again, similar timeline to the Sunrise Ranch Park project. We're seeking council direction tonight, as well as we are prepared to move into the engineering phase if approval is given. This project is something that we're trying to get completed. This fiscal year, there's a limited amount of landscape in this project, so staff's confident that bidding can get out in the summertime and construction can start in the early fall, which will allow for bulk of the project to be completed with enough time for the remainder of the year. So we are trying to complete this project as soon as possible. However, of course, we're here to receive comment from council, and that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. I anticipate that this project is going to pass tonight, but I'm struggling with it because even though it's ARPA money, we still have not heard from the state of California. They've gone through several rounds of giving out the last bit of money for Project Home Keys, and we, I don't think we've heard anything at this point, at least I've not been told that we've heard anything. And this is a big recreation project with, you know, a bit over $2 million, but yet, we are not putting any money out there to deal with our homeless situation. And that's a real big problem. I don't think the state is going to be giving out any more rounds of money. They have other projects that they're looking at right now as far as state funding is concerned, but they have their own leverage on that. So I will state here publicly that I'm going to abstain from this vote, because I really have concerns that we have other things that are really important that we need to take care of before we move forward with a pickleball court. And I'm not saying that the residents of Los Banos don't deserve it. I'm just saying we have other things that, in my opinion, are top priority that we need to take care of. We've spent a lot of money in upgrading our parks. We have other parks that are in the making, and that's coming out of their funding, I understand that. But we still have people living out in the street, and we have no idea of whether or not we're getting funding from the state to do a project home key to get people off the street, who we can get off the street. So that's, I just want the public to understand why I'm going to abstain from this, because I think this money, this ARPA money could be spent otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Jones?
So I've learned with my time being on here that government is not good at a lot of things, and that's figuring out the homeless situation, because that's a money pit that will just never, you'll never find the bottom of that hole. At least this one is actually pretty simple. There's a dollar amount that after we approve this design or rendering, staff will go back and compute a little bit more and then put it out to bid, and then it'll come back forward for us to discuss, and then at that point, decide whether or not it's actually going to get, if a bid's going to get approved, so forth, so on, right? So I don't want to wait for things that we can't do. I want to go forward with the things that we can do, and this is actually one of the simplest things. So I like the design. I think it's been a long time coming. I think it's a great place to add on to the Ag Sports Complex out there and utilize the rest of that ground. So I think it's great. Good job, staff.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? It was a ditto? Okay. I will just say this, that, you know, our job, as we sit here in this chamber, is as people to come forward and share their opinions, share what they want, share what their expectation of our community is. When this room is filled with people and all they talk about is pickleball, meeting after meeting, in fact, we had them probably as many as we had these kids in here tonight to get an award, that tells us that's something the community wants, desperately wants. With ARPA too, and with the homeless situation, again, throwing $2.4 million of one-time spending money is not going to fix a homeless issue, in my opinion. I am kind of encouraged that there is some pending legislation regarding that, but that's a whole different topic. But with it being said, again, we work for the people. So if the people want pickleball courts, we need to make that a priority. And we have, you know, a round of funds, and again, with ARPA, it's one-time funds, can't spend it on salaries, can't spend it on ongoing things. So to, you know, improve our community and give them the pickleball courts they want, I'm totally for it. So looking for, accept a motion at this time. Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Jones.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to approve the pickleball courts conceptual design presentation as submitted.
All right. And do I have a second? Councilmember Lambert.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right. If we get a roll call vote, please.
Lambert?
Yes.
Begonia?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yanez?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Advisement, item 10, advisement of public notices. I understand we have no reports. Item 11, our city manager is not here tonight, he's attending a conference. So move on to item 12, report update, Merced County Associative Governments, MCAG, Peninsula Clean Energy, PCE Measure V Committee, and San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and the Los Manos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. And we will start with Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. No report in particular to board issues. We had an election last Wednesday for an appointment of a new member to the board and for my reappointment to the air board. So I'm pleased that that has happened, and I've also been reappointed to serve as vice chair on the air board. So I'm grateful to the board members who saw fit to reelect me and to serve, and to the, all the people who are appointed to represent their cities from Bakersfield all the way up to Stockton, who come to vote for members who are being appointed and reappointed to the board. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and congratulations on your appointment. Move on to, start with MCAG, we have an upcoming meeting, so hopefully I'll have some more information to share on that. Peninsula Clean Energy, my colleagues are here tonight. Super excited. One thing with Peninsula Clean Energy, and again, I really need to take the lead with this, as far as getting out the education and information about this organization. Typically, PCE, they compare the rates of PG&E, and then they're 5% lower. And so just recently, the board approved that when PG&E does, if they do, and they will, raise their rates, this next go-around, the Peninsula Clean Energy will not be following them. And so I was very proud to hear that. And so again, right now, you know, citizens in Los Manos that are PCE customers, there is a rate difference, I believe roughly it's over 9%. And now that if PG&E does raise the rates, and I'm sure they will, that now it'll be even lower. And so again, if you are a PCE customer, yes, your bill is lower, regardless of what the internet says. You can, you can do the math on that. So again, and I want to take the lead to just get some information about that. Also, the approval of some grants and some funding opportunities from PCE for organizations that will affect Los Manos, I'm super proud of that. And the fact that more than 5,800 customers received a $300 bill credit to end the year and start the year this year, that was, that was pretty awesome. So thank you for that. As far as, we'll move on to Los Manos Downtown.
No report.
All right. Okay, and we'll go on to city council member reports. Start with Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge our long-term employee, Kim Tomas, who served, as it was indicated, 16 years for the city of Los Manos. She has now moved on to the county of Merced and working in their financial department. And I just want to thank him for all the years of service that she gave the city of Los Manos, and she will truly be missed. She had a wealth of knowledge that we lost here in Los Manos, and I just, Merced has, the county of Merced has gained an employee that is no longer with us. In regards to the speed cushions, I know when I, I brought this several years back to our city to look at, one of the, the main city that I looked at as far as speed cushions was the city of Stockton. And their process was quite complicated in the beginning, and as it went on, they made it more simple for people to be able to get speed bumps in their community, in their area, in their streets. They have four quadrants that they divided their city up in, and which represents their four council people, and they've given pockets of money to each of those council members' districts in order for their representatives to apply for, for money to have speed bumps installed. But their process became much more simple as time went on, so that it, it didn't become so cumbersome. I don't know whether or not the laws in the state of California have changed, but perhaps, you know, maybe this is something we need to take a look at again as a council, to see if we can make it more simple for people to apply for speed bumps, to reduce the speed on, on their residential streets, because we can't have police officers out there all the time, you know, citing people for speeding. We need to be able to slow it down some, some way, so that the residents in their neighborhoods could be safe. So I, you know, that's kind of an idea that I have, is I think we need to look at that speed cushion ordinance that we have, to see if we can make it simpler, and to also designate X amount of dollars on an annual basis in the various districts, so that when that money's gone, it's just gone, and you have to wait until the next round. But hearing residents come in and talk about, you know, they've applied two or maybe three times and been denied, I don't know if it's being denied for the same reason, but, and I don't know what the reasons were for that denial. But I, I think it's time to look at that ordinance again, and probably try to simplify it more, so that we can reduce the speeding in our community, in the residential areas, in all of our residential areas. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Move on to Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, this last weekend, Los Manos was hit pretty good with the wind and the rain, and I just want to say thank you to the departments that got out there and stuck it out, and pretty much kept us clean during the rain, and very minimal tree damage, maybe some private homes, but the job that they've done throughout the summertime, taking out some of these trees that were dead already, probably saved us a lot of issues. And I just want, thank you for all that, that you guys done there. Other than that, I believe that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Lewis, did you have something? Your light was still on? No? Did you still have some of your light just turned back on?
Oh.
Okay, okay. No worries. All right. Move on to Councilmember Begonia.
Once again, I thank you for, to all the city workers that were out there, making sure the roads were clear, drains weren't clogged. I saw you out there at 7:00 in the morning many times, making sure, cleaning out gutters and making sure our roads weren't flooded. Also, at the Cauldrons Park, the place structure's up, and that's an awesome, awesome park coming, awesome place structure, we're wheelchair accessible, wheelchair accessible, so that's always good to get everybody included. Not many parks have that ability, that's the only one here, right? Yeah, just one, just one so far. And something upcoming's, Arbor Day Celebration, March 1st. I know we'll have another council meeting before then, but that's March 1st at the Talbot Basin Park, 4:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. You can plant trees, play crafts, and play, make crafts, and all that stuff. So hope to see you guys out there. I believe I will be out there reading off some names, so we'll see you then.
All right. Councilmember Jones.
Yeah, I too want to thank staff for all their hard work over this weekend. That storm was just a little crazy, a little different than what we normally have. And I want to go back and thank staff again for all their work earlier this year, or last year, and being proactive and trimming up all the trees. I think that prevented a lot of issues over this, over Sunday and Monday with the nasty storms that we had. So thank you, staff, for all of your hard work and great presentations tonight. Can't wait for those to come to fruition. So thank you.
All right. I'll go last. Yeah, so just to address some, some things in the public forum, electronic harassment, you have me doing my homework now. I'm thinking it is the same thing as cyberbullying, but I'm going to do my homework either way. As far as the lighting, the question was brought up with the lighting, there is actually Title 24, which is basically, it's a familiar law, it applies to residential and communities as far as light, light pollution. The only thing I will say, it is a two-way street. You start dimming lights, you start removing lights, crime goes up. Traffic accidents start happening. And so just, and plus the, the cost that goes on with that. So, but again, giving me some homework to do. As far as the Animal Advisory Commission, the things that we're doing with Levi and with Sergeant Mendez and Chief Reina, it's amazing. You guys are, you're taking the right steps in the right direction. The one thing I will tell you is, what's going to get in your way is government. We are the slowest, most expensive entity you will deal with. So if an entity, a nonprofit, wants to be created, wants to run with a football, you're going to run a lot further than we are. We're going to compete against other cities for the same pool of funding, where nonprofits can go out and do public events, and can, you know, raise funds, and do that sort of thing, and be much more efficient than government would be. So just in my personal opinion, if we want to get things done, and we want to get them done faster, I'd love to see a nonprofit run with it, rather than a city-led commission. Colorado Park, I absolutely agree with Mr. Lobig, who came up here, you know, what's, what's going to cost us money now is going to cost us double tomorrow and triple the next day. So, you know, whatever projects that we're moving forward, you know, if we can afford it, I like to, you know, see that we can do it now, rather than when things, you know, go up in price. As far as the, the speed bumps, so speed bumps are a two-way street. They are, because we can't have them on every single street in the city, that would just lower traffic to immense, we'd have more issues with that. But with that being said, is our current form that we have now, there is a position on there where it does require neighbor endorsement. So if a group of neighbors does get together and apply for speed bumps, and it creates a traffic survey position or type of situation, then our police department would go out there typically and do the, the traffic survey. And I know that our department in the past, even recently, has done things like emergency stop signs and emergency speed bump type things. So I know it can be done. There's some comments made by a previously appointed council member on the discussion, like with water treatments and things like that, you know, last council talked about it. One thing I'll tell you is, I don't want to talk about it. I want to get it done. So if we want to have meetings to have meetings, just to have meetings, I'm not your guy. I'd rather get up here and have things, projects brought to us, we vote on them, and we get them through. So one of the things was, and again, you touched on it, was the, the tree trimming. We brought the tree trimming, you know, previously, probably a lot of people didn't think a lot about it, hey, we need to trim these trees, and Sunday, our city staff were running around doing a ton of work, and I'm really glad it wasn't those trees that they had to deal with, because we'd already, we'd already cut them down. So also to some of our city staff, dispatchers, police officers, firefighters, everybody in public works and parking wreck that was out Sunday, I know I was out driving around, Councilmember Jones was driving around, you know, to see our crews out there getting wet with chainsaws and lifting things and loading trucks. It was, it was amazing to see the teamwork that was put together. So, so thank you for that. And with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Lewis, you want to stay here? Councilmember Jones?
If we were to under Levi's response to your statement of the commission.
We, we can't do that. So, yeah. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And we'll adjourn at 7:37.